Next item is approval of tonight's agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Thank you. Any questions on tonight's agenda? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of approval, not opposed? All right, before we continue, please join us in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we are using a brand new board management platform effective this month. So those that are in regular attendance will probably notice that some things are a little more out of order than maybe they had been in previous agendas. So the next thing that we have on our list tonight is the approval of tonight's consent agenda. So do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Any questions regarding tonight's consent agenda? These are items A three, D? Any questions, comments, items to be pulled, or items of concern? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of approval of the consent agenda? Now opposed, motion carries. All right, then we will turn to Dr. Isaacson for this month's superintendent's report.
All right, first off, I want to thank everyone for graduation this week. It was a great evening, and Mr. Rona and his team did a great staff. And thank you to all the teachers that came out and did that, made that such a great evening for the kids. A couple of things I want to touch on as we kind of wrap up the year and begin the summer. We're going to have a lot of work from our admin team and such. They don't even know probably how much we're going to have due to the legislation that occurred in Jeff City at the end of the session. Within the packet, there's a whole list of different things. I want to say there's mid forty number of items that we have to do. Some are good for the school, some, you know, as far as kids who are suspended, we'll now be able to count their full attendance. But there's also different items that we're going to have to work through that they passed, that all districts ban the use of electronic devices during the school day for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. So while that's not, that's probably a big thing, accomplishing that and kind of reeling that back in may be challenging. We'll have to work through that, but the board will then have to create a policy on how we're going to approach that. There's a requirement that all staff is CPR, has CPR. We've got, I need to get clarification, doing CPR trained and CPR certified, because those are two different significant things. And so there's a minimum teacher salaries now are adjusted, so that's good. They put in some, thanks for the hundred and sixty-nine day school that's going to offer some forgiveness on a year like that we had this year. So those are good, and I'll let the board and public kind of read down through that and summarize that within my report. And then also, our board's awards recognition evening that we had a couple of weeks ago. Hundred and sixteen students were recognized across many disciplines, and that was a great evening to kind of wrap up the school year.
Almost done. That's all I got. Any questions on superintendent report? All right, back to you, Dr. Isaacson, for this month's financial report.
All right, within the financial report, there's two different reports. One I put in late this afternoon, mid-afternoon. I'm going to do the May financial report. First, this is tracking kind of how we're running this year through May. We realize about eighty-seven percent of our budget on the revenue side, eighty-four percent on the expenditure. We've got most of our money. One of the things that stands out to me, thank you, is on the state level, the state's been holding back SAT payments. It was supposed to be sixty-seven, forty-ish, and we're getting only sixty-seven hundred. As I said, they're going to make that up in June, we shall see. So they've been slowly, so we may get some revenue payments to end the year. In regards to how we get our revenue, on the revenue overview, we kind of keep going down through that. That's how we have ran through April thirtieth. We're down about almost four hundred thousand dollars in local revenue. Obviously, the federal revenue, we're down almost right at five hundred fifty thousand. A lot of that's just to some of the ESER programs and such year over year. And some of our other revenue categories are up as far as, on the other revenue, like I said last month, that was with the Five Ridge Wick property, et cetera. I included in this a three-year look back. This will be the first time that you'll have seen this, and this is what Ms. White and I will use going forward. That way, if you have any one year where you're like, hey, are we month over month tracking and something seems off? Or unexplainable, dive into that a little bit deeper. So it gives us, and the board members, kind of a look of a year over year going back three years, which will then help us project forward. So is there any question specifically on any of the items we're doing there? One of the numbers that stands out on the function level, we broke it down even, elementary instruction, middle school instruction. Things are fairly consistent, up a little bit, food service is up as far as some expenses, operation and maintenance. In part, just on some of the things that we've been working on to finish off the year. Debt payments is up two hundred and two percent. Obviously, next year, as I show, the debt came down significantly as we're prepaying the debt with over thirteen point six million paid on that on the debt service account. So any questions on that? Our general fund, we're on track, it's about the teacher fund. We're close to near budget depending on the June payouts, and I've been figuring those out. I still think we're pretty good on that. Debt service has been fully spent, capital projects, we've had some high utilization this spring as we're working on some of those projects. We're looking good through May. Then going to the next one, the budget projection and highlights for next year, that'll be, Mr. Moore, will you click on, go back out into the system?
Oh, the other document?
The other document. I want to commend Ms. White, who's here this evening, and the work that she's done with Dr. Vakim putting this together for our budget that we will have to in early June is the level of detail and finding, so as we go into next year, has been great. And so with this report is we're looking at assessed valuation to go up over four hundred million, reflecting a nine percent increase in our assessed valuation. We won't necessarily be able to claim that full amount because of the Hancock limit, CPI. With this, as we've paid off our debt, you can see our debt service will be going down. Our current tax rate is three dollars and seventy-three cents. The tax rate next year will be three dollars and fifty-two cents. We expect going down again for multiple years. We are by far the lowest tax rate in Jarvis County, probably by more than seventy cents at this point. So that's something as we're planning in the future. As far as revenue, we do expect, hopefully, if they fund the SAT on the basic formula at seventy-one, forty-five, excluding the hundred and sixty-nine day incentive, we look to get one point three million in additional revenue. So it's probably going to fall somewhere in the middle of that is how we'll budget this. Is for the purpose of this, we budgeted the full SAT because that's what they said they're going to get. But we're going to, in the actual budget, dial that back. Career ladder, you know, on the amount we're getting, and the classroom trust fund, the hundred and sixty-nine day incentive, we will achieve that. So we're get a hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars. That means we'll put that towards teacher salaries. And our total revenue gain is about a million dollars. Some key revenue decreases to note, and I think from now on, we're going to see this year over year. It may not be in the amount, but it's going to be with Mr. Redd now writing grants. You're going to see, we got revenue one year and then went away. So, you know, the Innovative Technology Grant for three hundred thousand, the CTE Performance Grant for two forty-six, which was the greenhouse. You know, those different grants, we'll have to, yeah, one time, and we'll try to write grants to fill those back in. One of the things that will be going down significantly is our investments, earnings on investment, in part because we paid the debt service out. And so that's going to be doing down about eight hundred fifty thousand dollars, but we're still making good interest on our operating. Especially, we locked in those CDs, and they, we made seventy-seven thousand dollars last month on those, so some good stuff there. As far as expenditures projections, Ms. White highlighted what we had budgeted for last year and what we're budgeting for next year as far as in the buildings with early childhood, technology, capital projects. And so laying some of that out. And then on the staff salary projections, and we'll get into that, is based on what we saw that we were looking at ending the year. That's where this evening, we're going to recommend adding an additional five hundred dollars to the already agreed upon MOU to the teacher salary schedule to go to a seventeen hundred dollar increase instead of twelve hundred. That still puts us in a really good spot as we project to, with all the different changes that are recommended tonight, project that we're, from a salary standpoint, we'll be a hundred and forty thousand dollars over what our preliminary two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five budget said. We're just doing some things differently in how we've restructured, and that includes all the early childhood teachers that have been added. So we'll be adding eight hundred fifteen thousand dollars to the classified, certified, excuse me, certified salary schedules, just salary. To the classified, it will be seven hundred and seven. To quantify that, it's more uncertain, not certified, it's those SLPs that aren't certified, in addition to nurses and such. So there's salaried staff in there as well. So about one point five million dollars adding into just salary. That doesn't, also, well, that will include some of the other things. Based on what we're planning for on the budget now is we have, this is the, what it would look like, funding balances ending at the end of June thirtieth of this year. And where we expect to end at this time next year to be at thirty-six point nine in reserves. So kind of a planned spend down as we look, we are going to have to go for a tax increase and investing in our teachers and our kids and such is to be able to show that. But also, we're not a bank, so we need to spend that down, and I'll be able to show that, hey, this is, we're investing, and we need the investment to come back. As far as total bonds, we almost have all the debt paid off. And so as you'll see, next year, our plan is to spend two point two million dollars on, out of debt service. After next year, debt service will be gone. We'll have enough money to pay off all the debts with the interest. So that'll essentially be wiped out, and again, our capital leases are there, but the interest rates are so low. We're making more money on the interest rates that are essentially paying for themselves. So that's a highlight of where we're at so far this month and where we're, what the budget's going to look like and how we're making those decisions from the salary standpoint. I appreciate all the staff in the office and the principals for getting that in. It allows us to be strategic in some of the moves that we're recommending this evening, where you know, you have all that information. So appreciate Ms. White and Dr. Vakim for their many hours on that.
Appreciate it. Any questions from five or twenty-six? All right, so moving on, before we switch gears, we do have an item of action regarding the approval of the revised fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-five budget. So do I have a motion to approve the revised fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget as presented at tonight's presentation? Any further questions on that, five, twenty-five? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of approval? Not opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for that. And then I'll ask Ms. Noah, if there are any items of public comment tonight? Any public comments? Then we'll turn back to some reports back regarding academics, report tonight on the Broadridge Ag Program update.
So before I jump into that too, this is typically, if you've come to our board meetings or if you're watching our board meetings, our, how we're going to set up our board meeting, this would, there's going to be like action items, it'll be like a new business. But we've put everything under our strategic plan goals. So starting out, we're doing academics, teaching, learning. So I'm going to talk about the Broadridge Farm Report. There's a board in there on the greenhouse program, but then we have an approval item right behind that. So it's not just approval, approval, approval. We're mixing in some reports, so we're kind of topic focused with that. So starting out with the Broadridge Agriculture Report is, I included some information there from our meeting with Mr. Redd now, Mr. Rona, and Dr. Veru. We met with Ms. Jackity, kind of working out what we need for the summer, and also put in some of our significant milestones and such. They had their FFA banquet and just doing a great job over there. We actually had our first state FFA degree recipient as well that we're able to recognize, Ms. Giblin. And so the greenhouse is, is that all completely done now?
It's, it's up and running, spire gases, so of course, that's just for the heating, so we're going to heat this up here. But spire gas should be done within the next week or so, they started running the conduit underneath, but, yeah, it's occupancy.
One of the things too, there's a patio going in with an Eagle Scout, is our gator leases, but we think we may make a change on the tractor size. Is we had a lawnmower come up and we tried that out, Mr. Allison did. It's a diesel lawnmower, it's nine feet wide, mows at about twenty miles an hour. Good times. I don't know, I can drive it. But by getting that for like mowing the crosscut, and around campus, especially during this spring season, you'd be able to do it much faster, and you can mow it about five inches. So to be able to, the area that we're not using for hay and such, we'll be able to do fairly easily. So we'll, not having to use a tractor to do all this stuff, we can go to a smaller sized tractor. That will allow us to use some of the smaller implements and more kids being able to drive it. But it, what the goal is still being able to, if we need to pull the big brush hog to do that. So just some transition there that I think will actually kind of improve everything and make it easier to maintain. That's all I have on that one.
Any questions? Thank you. You mentioned the greenhouse program, but the next board report is related to the fiscal year twenty-five enhancement grant, and more specifically, the greenhouse program, et cetera.
Do you want to speak to that, Mr. Redd now? I included this document because he has to do a follow-up on it, so just...
So there are different reports and different things that we have to do for the grant as we've got it. We have to do budget and then a lot of different things for them. The last thing that we had to do was submit final budget, that's already been done. And then we have to do a report that is due next week, but that has already been completed, it was completed about three weeks ago. So as far as regards to the sake, that grant is done, that grant is completed, it's checked off our list. So it should be difficult.
Any questions? All right, moving right along, we do have some items of action. The next is the approval of the Technology Specialist for Instructional Technology and AI Integration. Do I have a motion to approve the position description for Technology Specialist for Instructional Technology and AI Integration as presented? Any questions on this position? Hearing none. All those in favor of approval? None opposed? Motion carries. Right on to the approval of the Instructional Teacher slash Dean of Student Conduct position, the intermediate school. Do I have a motion to approve this position at the intermediate school for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year? To be filled by a current building staff member who can meet those qualifications. Any questions, clarifications? Any concerns with this position?
I can speak to it a little bit. This is a new position that we've never had, so I think, this is going to be like a stipend position, similar to a summer school stipend of six thousand dollars because a part of our salary thing is we increase summer school salaries by five hundred dollars in the next year, so as part of that. This will be, it would need to be a teacher in the building who is certified by DESI as administrator. And so it'll be kind of a pilot program to work where they're able to help out Mrs. Marchetti and Mr. Jackwell, just doing minor discipline, student focused though, on all of the tiki tech stuff that teachers need. Like typically, like I'm not going to write that up because they're busy on those things, but allows that to be addressed and almost another layer of, all right, you visited with that person, and that person will make phone calls home and just hopefully to get between an hour and two hours a day, and then they'll need to do their planning after school. So it's going to be working with their team as well. So they're going to have, I don't want it to be a drain on their partner teachers and such as that. So it's going to have to be somewhat of a, a learning there, but also we'll have them, we plan to have a mentor that's also working next year with Mrs. Murray. And so that person working with this individual provides another opportunity to grow leadership, opportunities for our staff to become administrators and leaders. And being that it's completely student focused, they're not going to have any responsibility on the adults or any authority on the adults from that. And they're still a teacher, they just, as, they're able to have the hammer and be, assist the teachers and give them some more help.
You had mentioned pilot, do you, do you feel like if that pilot's successful, do you feel this would be something that we would see out of the buildings?
I don't want to say no, I don't...
I mean, you know, I guess, you know, if, you know, if behaviors, I guess, go out of control, having more, or that, you know, is that something that you can foresee?
I think some of it, like for the intermediate standpoint, because they have the three grade levels. And we've had different buildings with three grade levels before, is I've been kind of looking at this, looked at the number of write-ups in the building. At the time of looking it up, which was probably three weeks ago, the intermediate had over a thousand write-ups. Comparatively, the primary had three or four hundred. And so I think volume, the high school obviously had the most, and junior high is, I think the intermediate actually had just a little bit more than the junior high, but it wasn't much more. So volume matters, because when you look at it from a DESI numbers thing, is another way to have gotten help there would be to, the elementary building actually enrollment, where you take a halftime principal, that doesn't necessarily work. So do your question is, for that amount of money, it's beneficial if we can make it work? I think it provides that opportunity. So maybe, but I don't want to be like, if a building's got three hundred and also... If John and Melissa are building for their kids and things are going bad, it's kind of like, John, Melissa, what are you doing? Why do we need...
Or if those behaviors follow a group, per class or whatever.
I'm putting on my teacher hat here, because I remember those days very well. So the expectation is that this person who is a teacher would basically give up planning period every single day. And so anything else would have to be done before school, after school, lay-in, et cetera, et cetera. So I'm also assuming, because it is beginning, that this is going to kind of be a fluid type situation with that. Maybe the expectations are here, but while this person is overwhelmed, so the expectations can change either up or down based on, you know, what's going on. Because we don't want to set somebody up to fail.
Well, no, absolutely, and to that, here's my first priority, and I have a visit with Mrs. Marchetti on this. What we say every day is if that individual's team needs, to me, this isn't, I don't want them big time and like, no, we're not going to talk about them. They're a teacher first and assisting on that, but also to that end is, oh, we've had a week long, if they're grading papers, like if they're doing things that are impacting themselves, my expectation is, hey, go, that's something you would do after school. If it's something that your team needs you, my expectation is you help out your team members...
Or your students.
Or your students and on working through that. There may need to be a couple of adjustments on working through to make it work, but my perspective on that, it's, it's a great opportunity as somebody who wants to be a leader to get in there and show, because it's completely focused on kids, so they're going to be a teacher's hero. But if they never show up and they're finding themselves, you know, it's like, well, I'll just make those phone calls for my class. A teacher hasn't seen them in six weeks, it's going to be a little bit difficult, like when they go, like, I'm going to do this. When they're applying for a full-time position, it can make or break them. So it's, I would encourage them to do that, so. It's going to be, again, working with the mentor and going through that, and we just want to be able to help our teachers out. Provide an update mid-year and how it's coming.
Other questions? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of approval? Any opposed? Motion carries. Right on to the approval of the science curriculum. Do I have a motion to approve the science curriculum as it's presented this evening? All right, any questions? A lot of work goes into the science curriculum, all curriculum, but in particular, any questions related to sciences? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of approval?
I have a sitting here, like John would have a whole list of questions.
All right, tied to that, we have the approval of the purchase of some science resources. Do I have a motion to approve the science resource purchase as it is presented this evening? Any questions regarding this purchase? Any questions regarding this purchase? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval. None opposed? Not opposed? Motion carries. All right, on to items related to culture, climate, and communication. Approval of the Communications and Strategic Engagement Director. Do I have a motion to approve the establishment of a Communications and Strategic Engagement Director position as presented?
Motion.
We have one motion, we have a second? Perfect, okay, all right. Questions? How much additional backup on the creation of this position?
Yes.
Yeah, because we went to that meeting when I was still in office, I knew one of the few districts that didn't have a full-time communication.
That's true.
And yes, it is time, especially with the amount of communication. And with Dr. Freeman and Ms. Frasca both retiring, is in doing this, my plan, tentatively in the salary book, we have two people still working on communications. Ms. Sights is, did like the social media website video. I actually, I think we need to change that title more of like Communications Assistant. This summer, we've already visited with her, we need to retain that position for a minimum of one year to get the onboarding of a new communications position. But also the printed nest goes out in July. So we need to get the website, so we all kind of need to work on that. So at least a one year of keeping her and Shelby Walsh, does all the athletic pictures and such. But this is definitely a needed position, and we're going to be looking for somebody with a communications journalism background. So it's likely not necessarily a, somebody that's potentially worked in this.
Big long-term strategic change.
I think we're going to have plenty of applicants.
Yeah. Any other questions? All right, hearing none, all those in favor of approval. None opposed, motion carries. All right, on to the approval of the program evaluation for our technology department. Do I have a motion to approve the program eval for technology as presented?
Motion.
Second.
All right, any questions on that program evaluations?
Do you have anything you'd like to present, Don, or...
Yeah, I can go through and review if you like.
Yep.
Just kind of hits the highlights.
Two details, yep.
Okay, so, so yeah, we have six employees, and we currently have a job posted to add to our department that's going to assist in positions going away at the high school and the junior high for the library secretary positions there, so we're going from two of those locations to one. So that'll add seven coming up. I tried to write this kind of as-is, as things have already happened. So next year, you'll see some of these updates I kind of mentioned as I go through. But this is, like I said, kind of a snapshot of as things are right now. I've got a section under the program objectives and goals that talks about all the devices we support. So just to briefly highlight those, seven hundred fifty-plus computers and laptops, four thousand plus Chromebooks and Chromeboxes, three hundred tablets, over forty-five servers, four hundred-plus phones, twenty-five copiers, two hundred and fifteen classroom projectors, one hundred and twenty-five interactive boards, and then various other technologies on top of that. Just those numbers, which would be above that, would be five thousand eight hundred and sixty devices that our department supports. Again, that's plus at the end of that, and with our six staff members. So really, that would be over a thousand devices per person that we support as a department. So again, that would change adding somebody on coming up soon. Under the program strength section, just wanted to cover a few items there. Server virtualization, we've got over forty virtualization, or virtual servers. We've got redundant servers, to make sure if one goes down, we're still functioning. We've got other physical servers as well, including our Infinite Campus server. And we have a, the storage for that virtualization is on a device that has redundant hardware, and we have a backup for that that's off-site at another building. So that helps provide if we have a natural disaster event, we still have something on-site to take care of our needs and keep trying to run things here. So the next section, just highlight our network. We've got a district wireless and wired network that, we have wireless access points installed at each classroom. For the most part, we're going to fix the ones that don't have them, where we might be, we might have them in the hallways. There's just very few coming up, and we replace our wireless and wired network that got approved recently. So we're going to revamp that this summer, but again, that's not mentioned out here just because it hasn't happened yet, but I wanted to bring that up. But it's definitely time to do that, and those devices are out of support at this point, so it's a perfect timing. Our backup systems, we store backups locally and off-site in the cloud. So that gives us a little bit quicker restoration if we're able to access local backups. And then in the cloud, if we need to, off-site, in case, again, a natural disaster happens or there's issues there. Student information system, just kind of for your information, we implemented Infinite Campus in two thousand and seven from our older system before that, and we've been using Infinite Campus ever since. We host it locally here, our server, a lot posted in the cloud. But I have noticed a lot of alerts where their system isn't available. So that actually brings, gives us more uptime for our staff versus having it hosted out in the cloud. And that's worked out really well for us so far. We're due for a new server coming up, our Infinite Campus server, summer of two thousand and twenty-six. Internet access, and summer of two thousand and nineteen, we doubled our internet to one gigabit. Internet from, with AT&amp;T, that's going to double again this summer, so July first, we'll have two gigabits. Again, that's not on here, just wanted to mention that, that'll be on the next eval report coming up. We've got some security service with AT&amp;T that mitigates some attacks on our internet service if we need to. We have had to use it in the past, unfortunately, but it's kept things running. We've got remote site connections to transportation maintenance. When we moved central office, when we did that, we brought them onto our internal network. And so that saved a monthly cost, and that's just continuous savings because we had a one-time cost for that construction. And now we're still continuing to see those savings today. And then if we ever need to upgrade that connection, we have a, we can do that as well to speed that connection up at central office, so. Let's see, so Chromebook One-on-One Program, just kind of another, kind of review the history there. We started a program in twenty, the school year two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one, and that was in response to COVID-nineteen, to make sure our kids could have access at home with those devices. We have an insurance program with Gallagher Insurance for administrative relief and management of payments and claims. And staff computers, our next replacement on staff computers is the primary location. We're going to do that this summer. And sorry, I had more to cover, I'm like, I realize this is kind of going long, so I'm going to, you can read kind of the, read through this if you like, but. And then going under program considerations, just wanted to highlight, we do have an aging van, but at the same time, still with one hundred and eighty-eight thousand plus miles, it's two thousand and four. But I want to say thank you for, we recently received a transportation van, and that's really been helpful, so. That's been working out good for us. Just wanted to mention, the junior high is the only school that has analog cameras, so that would be kind of next on the list for security cameras, so that's something I wanted to bring up. And under concerns, the high school business labs are going to give, make sure they're, they have up-to-date computers this summer as well. So that's going to be replaced, anything that's needed there. And phone system is coming up on ten years old, and we have seen more frequent issues. So that's highlighted in here as well, that'll be something that we look at replacing coming up, or at least starting to look into that. And that's where I'll stop, so. Any questions?
Do all district employees go through a mandatory cybersecurity training, either annually or onboarding or...
So we provide through InfoSec IQ, we fish our employees, and that, but that also, they provide training, and we're, we want them to have at least thirty minutes of training every year. If an employee clicks on a link they're not supposed to, then it provides extra resources to try to train them on what mistake they made when they click on the link, so things to look for. So I love hearing some of those incidents. And I got a little thank you card, and then when I opened it up one day from a staff member, it had a little picture of a fish, and it said, "You've been fished." So they were like, "You got me," so they got me back, so, fished me with the card, so.
Well, what I love about that is that we as boards get those emails too. I've been caught. I clicked the link, yes, you got me.
Do I have the highest number? I'm just asking.
It's a safe way to fish our staff and try to educate them better. And anyways, this company, I think, this is the first time I've heard staff say, "Hey, I didn't get that training." Because it's, they have a humorous and some actors that kind of try to relay the concepts that they needed to learn in the training in a real fun way. So it's the first year that I've heard them actually really want to have the training, and they're like, "I didn't get it," so that was good.
Thank you, thanks. All right, other questions?
The only question I saw on here is that I think one of your goals was getting a dedicated technology storage space. Can you elaborate more, like is there a specific size, or are you looking for something that's maybe at a certain temperature control? I don't know.
Yeah, so we find ourselves kind of bursting at the seams at times, and so we moved some of our Chromebook storage into our server room, just trying to expand that. If you visit the data center, you'll see that we're kind of crowded with parts and Chromebooks and taking care of over three thousand kids. Our other storage facility is the junior high annex, but it's also shared where welding's occurring and other items that, it's not the cleanest space, right? So we try to select what we put there, so anything that is more temperature-controlled or clean. So that's why that's in there, try to, you know, we make do with what we can, and but if it's an opportunity that comes up, then we'd love to take advantage of it, so. But we're doing, we make it work.
I know a facilities guy, he can probably stake out for a prime target. Yeah.
Other questions? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of approval of the assessment of the technology department. None opposed, motion carries. All right, next on our list is a report, annual report that is, from the foundation and district grants.
Good evening again. First, from the foundation, want to say welcome to the director meeting.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thanks very much. Thank you.
So this is from the foundation. As you got to hear the report from Kevin Roberts last month, even though we duped him.
He still gave it to us.
He still gave it, it was a very good report. We're excited that you guys are enjoying the board, and we're excited, very excited about working with you guys. So here is a written summary of what we've been up to. So the... Actually, why don't I fully clear out? Get one, we'll work too. The foundation now, we've had a couple board members that had to step away. We now have back up to full strength, up to nine. You have Abby Taylor, who's a two thousand and eleven grad, and at one point, she even worked for the NFL, and she's very much with communications, and so we're excited about her joining the team. And then Jamie Lammer, is a ninety-eight grad and a parent in the district, super talented. And so we're excited about that. Over the, this last year, they raised over fifteen thousand dollars. And that number, I think, was significant, it rose and moved forward. They offered three thousand dollars in scholarships this last year to the seniors of two thousand and twenty-five, so we're excited about that. Last year, they didn't have the classroom grants, we are reinstating that, they're reinstating that for this year. They accepted applications, they will announce that, it's okay with you guys, at the opening, rah rah. So they're really excited about that. Project through generous donation from a patron, the fountain, got to get it up and going, but we're excited about that. It's an icon in the community. They hosted a retired staff brunch, we had about eighty people, eighty retired staff show up. A couple Saturdays ago, they loved it, I imagine that they will continue that again twice a year. It was sponsored by different businesses, Maritime, Roberts, the law firm, Roberts, Fluton, Zimmer, and First Community, right, so they were excited about that, it was a good time, it was good for people to see faces. Normally, they only would see each other whenever they were at funerals, and so they were excited to see each other possibly, like. Senator Lenhorst and Dr. Eisen did a great job representing you guys at that. The foundation is going to have a big kickoff of stuff this coming homecoming. They're going to have homecoming golf tournament, there is information in the back of your packet about that. The Thursday of Homecoming Week, and then the Friday after the parade, they will be hosting a tailgate party at the farm for the alumni, and so they're excited about that. I imagine that that will be probably about the time that the retired staff brunch will happen again. They are going to, they are in the works also for a two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of the United States Gala the week before July fourth next year, so you'll be hearing a lot more about that as we move forward. And so the foundation is going very well, and we're super excited about that. From grants, we got thirty thousand dollars in grants from the Jefferson Foundation, ten thousand for the backpack program, twenty thousand for the playground, help assist us with the playground and the intermediate, we're thankful for that. We got a, we just got found out, was it last week, I think, we got a five hundred dollar grant from FCS Financial for the fire pits at the farm, and so we're excited about that. We got a thirty thousand dollar Innovative Technology Education Fund grant to pay for new computers in one of the high school business labs, and we're thankful for that. We did talk about this evening, the CTE grant, or two-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars plus for the greenhouse. All of those grants, the final reports are done, and so we're excited about that. We have several partnerships, concrete strategies. We have, Dr. Eisen's done a lot of work with them, and Pierce Century Farms does a great job. They are, we worked out with them, they are harvesting our hay a couple times this summer, which is a big, huge help to us as well, and Ms. Jack. That's a quick summary, we've got, we're waiting to hear from a grant from CTE for this year for, to renovate the family consumer science stuff. And we're working on the safety and security grant, Safe Schools, through the Department of Justice. And that's where we're going to get, talk about cameras and different stuff like that. So we've got a lot, a lot of balls in the air right now. Any questions?
One additional foundation I have done, so...
One additional foundation I have kind of support on that topic is a former school board member, John Schuster's mother, reached out to me and she had closed his collection committee account through the NSC. Wanted to give those funds to Kiana Nelson in the form of a scholarship, recent grant she had seen in the newspaper, some of the political activism and such. And so in order, assisting through that process, using the foundation, a donor matched that amount that she had. And so now there's the John Schuster Memorial Scholarship. And so we'll figure out a way to send that to Mrs. Schuster. I joked with her that probably the person has to be opposed and this would be a policy.
I know.
Kind of a white. So to that, if that's another use of the foundation and Mrs. Schuster not has a scholarship, it has, I mean, that would add to that.
If anybody ever wants to start a scholarship, all you have to do is call. We can help you out.
And thank you for continuing your senior discussion. I've had several people reach out. They're glad that didn't go away when you.
Thank you for your leadership at the foundation level and doing those initiatives for. Sounds like you here?
Thank you.
All right. Onto items related to safety, both physical, mental, emotional, and social. And under this category, we have another board report regarding the mental health Missouri Student Survey 2024.
Just sharing that with the board. That's actually comes from the Jefferson County mental health board. They conduct a survey within Jefferson County. So it's not just Hillsborough students, but just some information about what's going on within the county. We have a representative, Dr. Friggin from Dunkland, serves on that board. And so how they allocate the money to the different school districts and, or not necessarily school districts explicitly, to the different organizations that serve our students. And so some interesting information, sobering information related to, to the more kids. And just sharing that.
Any questions on that report and data set before we move on? Okay. All right. Onto some action items related to leadership and governance. The first of which are some minutes from the April 22nd meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the April 22nd Board of Education meetings presentation? All right. Any questions, comments, clarifications? Hearing none. All those in favor of approval? None opposed, motion carries. All right. We do have a bill payable to Jefferson College. Do I have a motion to approve a bill to Jefferson College as it's presented?
Motion.
Any questions on this single payable bill? Expecting none. All those in favor of approval this evening? None opposed? And I will also have one abstention. Motion carries. All right. Onto the approval of the district audit contract. Do we have a motion to approve the contract with Mueller, Obergefell, and Jones for the fiscal year 2025 district audit that's coming up?
Second, third.
Questions?
How long have we been, does this thing use last year, right?
That was Daniel Jones. It appears that they may have been.
Merged or, yeah, merged or sold in one of the three.
I would anticipate, to your question, we've been with that.
Yeah, as far as I can remember, yeah.
And so I would anticipate, Ms. White had actually sent me an email that next year probably we'll go after Ben and the cards with us. Just, we may end up with them, but you know, for transparency and it's a $20,000 purchase. So I would anticipate that.
Makes sense. Thank you. Other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of approval this evening? None opposed, motion carries. Do we have the approval of the addendum to the 2526 certified staff MOU? Do I have a motion to approve the addendum to the coming year certified staff MOU of under, of, of understanding to adjust the base salary increase from $1,200 to $1,700? Motion.
Second.
Any questions, clarifications on this? Hearing none. All those in favor of approval? None opposed, motion carries. Next is our approval of the 2526 salary and benefits handbook. Do I have a motion to approve the salary schedules via enclosed information and those duty assignments for the coming school year as recommended in?
Motion.
Is that maybe was your second? Any questions on the contents of that handbook? Hearing none. All those in favor of approval this evening? None opposed, motion carries. All right. Next up, we have the approval of step level and educational movement for eligible employees for the coming year. Do I have a motion to approve salary schedules, level enhancement, level advancements rather, and the educational movement for all Hillsborough, our three district eligible employees for the 2526 school year?
Second.
Any questions on this this evening? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor of approval? And again, none opposed, motion carries. All right. And we also have the approval of our upcoming year's Board of Education meeting calendar. Do I have a motion to approve the 2526 board, Board of Education meeting schedule as it's presented?
Motion.
Okay. All right. Any questions on the upcoming calendar?
Why is August not on the 4th Thursday? Is that because?
That's actually because I'm presenting at a conference.
Okay. I just figured.
That seat will be out of the HR. That's, that's.
I was like, I already had on my calendar as the 4th. Just curious.
And in case we need anyone hired.
Yeah.
Because I'm a star of school. We did try to move the August meeting around that week. I think it's a Monday. So it's kind of, but it was after that week.
All right. Other questions?
Committee assignments.
Did we skip the committee assignments?
Yeah.
I have a couple things to ask.
Yeah. All right. We'll come back to that. I missed that on my list. All right. All those in favor of approval of the meeting calendar as presented? Yes. All right. Moving one item back up the agenda, we have board committee assignments to work through. Do I have a motion to approve those proposed committee assignments as presented in accordance with our policy BCD and the related governance procedures?
Okay.
Move some people around here.
A recommendation. For the Hockel Warden support staff, you know, there's two of us and then two former board members. I would like to recommend that we add another person, whether it's a, I'm assuming a third board member to that. Because at a step of four, we haven't hit this yet, but it's a possibility that we would have two to two vote. And with five people on the committee, that won't happen.
Okay.
And if anybody wants a insurance spot, I would be ready to go on.
I'll trade you for policy. I'm on policy already.
To that end, we don't have to have three. You just can't have more than three. So.
Right. Exactly.
If you want to rescind on that, I can remove, and we'll just have two on the committee if anyone else wanted to.
We already have that two on the committee. There's two of us and two former board members. Are we talking about different things?
Yeah. We'll stay on the Hockel Ward.
That's what I thought we were talking.
You brought up board policy.
No, she brought up, and then I brought up the insurance. Yes, I'm sorry.
Where were you at?
What are we talking?
Let's do the Hockel Ward.
All right. Hockel Ward. Yeah. Any further discussion on, on the addition of additional seats to that committee?
I'm good with that.
Yeah. All right. So we do maybe make an amendment to the motion on the floor, which is as presented. So do we have a motion to amend this recommendation? And it is specifically to add that fifth seat to the, a motion for that.
Second. And then, of course, we need somebody to fill that spot.
All those in favor of the amendment to that? So that is our, that's our, that's our current motion on the floor. Are there any further discussion on, on any of the other committee structures? Okay. All right. Then moving on to committee assignment and arrangements. The, you're concerned about being on or off of insurance? Anybody?
I would very easily come off of insurance. Not that it really is. If somebody planned to be on the, you know, one of your coveted spots.
Or I could just.
You did a great job.
It would just, yeah, it would just potentially be a vacant spot if that wasn't.
I don't mind. I mean, you know.
If somebody really wanted it, you gave it out.
That's right. I would.
You're a team player, Beth.
I am. Try to be.
You did such a great job with it. So.
Just going to keep you in there. Big shoes to fill there, Beth. Big shoes.
Yeah, right.
Any other discussion tonight on committee assignments? Anybody want to shift or change? Or dying to get on or off of any other?
Well, let's see. What else I know? I always know on my name at the end.
Yep. That's our, that's our list. All good. Okay. All right. One last call for any concerns related to committee, committee structures before we.
I'm here with the Hockel Ward.
Yes. Would anyone like to fill what will be the new seat on the Hockel Ward committee?
Don't fill it.
Steps in. All right. Take Miss Cage. Okay. All right. With that, all those in favor of approval of tonight's discussion on changes regarding board committees? None opposed, motion carries. Last item of business tonight is with regards to updates regarding upcoming calendar events. Looks like we've got a couple of items coming up in June. Got a work session on the 12th and then a regular meeting on the 26th. All right. So yeah, the evening of the 12th, 7:00 PM for our upcoming work session, and that'll be the final draft of the budget. And then we'll have your session on the 26th. So any questions regarding the upcoming calendar? Okay. Brings us to the end of tonight's agenda. All those in favor of adjourned tonight's meeting? I want to put, oh, put in a motion, motion, I'm sorry. We have a motion to adjourn at 8:05. All those in favor? None opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Thank you.